Councilman Scott Morgan will get us started by leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So tonight is the January 31st, 2022 study session of the Livonia City Council. This is a meeting that will set the agenda for the 1,938th regular meeting of the city council, which will be a voting meeting and take place on Wednesday, February 16th of 2022. So you will notice that six of the council members are present. The only one missing is our colleague, Vice President Toy. She's at home. She is well, but she is unable to be here under advice of doctors because of the new variants of COVID. We earlier this evening concluded a very short, very quick meeting of the city council for a regular agenda. I'm happy to report that in between that meeting and this meeting, we had a game of two-hand-touch football outside of the city hall. I won't tell you what team won, but we had a lot of time to make up. So anyways, welcome to the meeting. If we have any audience communication, please approach the podium. There appears to be anybody want to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? There is nobody approaching, so we will go to announcements from the city council. Any council announcements? There appears to be no city council announcements. So tonight's agenda will not be voted on, but there will be motions that come from the council in regards to an approving, a denying, or referring to the committee of the whole or another council committee in regards to an item to study it further. Those items will be placed on a future regular council meeting agenda where they will be officially voted on. So with that being said, we will kick off the agenda with item number one, a request to waive the city's noise ordinance coming to us from Mr. Robert Race of the Knights of Columbus to allow a car show with a DJ at St. Colette's Catholic Church at 17600 Newburgh Road on Saturday, June 4th of 2022 from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Mr. Race, welcome. Please introduce yourself. State your name and address.
Hey. As Mr. Jolly said, my name is Robert Race. I'm a member of St. Colette's Parish and also a member of their Knights of Columbus, the Dr. Thomas A. Dooley. This is our fifth annual car show that we've presented here in Livonia. We've received waivers in the last four and hoping it'll continue with this one. As Mr. Jolly said, it'll be on June the 4th from 9:00 a.m. till 2:30. We have the same DJ that we've had in the past, so he knows the rules and he knows what he has to do to keep the music, as some people call it, noise down.
Thank you, Mr. Race. Mr. Barr.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is, as was alluded to, something that we've had a number of years now. And as far as I know, it's gone off without a hitch. I'd be happy to offer this for consent if there's no objection, approval.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Mr. Race, you have an approving for the consent agenda, which means you do not have to come back to the next meeting. I'll note that I am one of your Brother Knights of Columbus at St. Colette, and I'm happy to have this conflict because then I don't have to volunteer for the event, right?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Okay.
Item number two, the reappointment of William Tansel to the Livonia Board of Review from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on February 16th of 2025. Yes, Ms. Thomas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council, for considering the appointment of Bill... Oops, sorry. Thank you for considering the reappointment of Bill Tansel to the Board of Review. Bill has been a Livonia resident for over five decades and has served on the Livonia Board of Review since 2010. After retiring from Ford, where his specialty was computer systems and marketing, Bill spent about 20 years volunteering in the AARP Tax Aid Program, which provides free tax preparation for seniors. Bill received both his bachelor's and master's degrees in business administration from Washington University. He is also a proud veteran, having served in the U.S. Army during the Vietnam War. He is happily married and has two children and six grandchildren. Bill is here this evening and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Tansel, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the mayor nominating me, and I appreciate the council considering my reappointment. It's been a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it a great deal. Your assessor's office and all the folks who are there are a very professional group. They treat all the people who come, who quite often are not in a very good mood, very, very well, and they give them a fair hearing. And after we actually see a lot of people and hear their complaints, they feel at least vindicated that they had a chance to plead their case as to why their property taxes are not what they should be. They think they should be lower. In most cases, they really don't understand the process in terms of reassessments and what have you. We've got actually a pretty good group of folks who are on the Board of Review. One is an attorney, one is a real estate fellow, and then myself, who brings up the rear. I have a fair... My work in the ARP Tax Program turns out to be pretty helpful because a lot of the clients who come there really don't know much about taxes and quite often have not filed their taxes, so we can also direct them over to that program, which is held in the senior center. And last year, I think we did, we had to move over to the Schoolcraft College, but we did about 600 returns and helped over 1,000 people. In a normal year, the tax program helps up to 1,300 people or so. And I think it's a real benefit to the citizens of the community to have that service there. But again, I've enjoyed my time on the board and good people to work with, and it's really an honor for me to serve, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think Mr. Donavick wants to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. If there's no objection from my colleagues for the reappointment of Mr. Tansel, and thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you for all that you do. You're all set. You have an approving. You do not have to join us at the next meeting.
Okay. I've got to apologize. I've got a sick wife at home, so I'm going to have to leave right now.
Yes, sir. Well, we wish her the best.
All right. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you, LaShaw.
Item number three, a waiver petition from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2021-11-02-24, submitted by R&amp;E Landscaping and Construction LLC requesting to construct and operate a special trade contractor's yard at 34413 Rosati Avenue, located on the west side of Stark Road, just south of the CSX Railroad in section... Excuse me. In the southwest section, southwest quarter of Section 28. A notification to attend was sent to Ron Emling of R&amp;E Landscaping. Is that you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ronald Emling, 34422 Rosati Avenue, Livonia, Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Toramina, are you going to be taking this off the top here?
Yes, I can provide some introductory comments regarding this petition. As was indicated, this is a waiver use petition involving a special trade contractor's yard. The property is zoned M1 light manufacturing. This falls under a waiver use because of the type of outside storage that would be occurring at the site. This property, Lot 2 of Rosati Industrial Park subdivision, as you can see from the zoning map, it sits on the south side of Rosati Avenue. It's about a quarter mile west of Stark Road. It does border undeveloped residential zone property to the south, but the zoning to the east, to the west, and to the north is all part of Rosati Industrial Park zoned M1. There are a few special requirements that apply to these types of uses. One is the fencing that is required around the yard. Second is the height of any stored materials is limited to a height of eight feet. And then the requirements for landscaping, particularly where the sites border residential. This is an aerial photograph of fairly recent conditions. As you can see, there's, it is still a developing industrial park subdivision, but it gives you an idea of what borders the site to the south of that undeveloped residential property, as I mentioned. Here's a rendering of the building. This building would look very similar to the other buildings that have been constructed in the park. Most importantly, though, this is the site plan showing the placement of the building on the property. Building itself is about 6,000 square feet in size. The paved areas, you can see in the gray around the building, does not extend all the way to the boundaries of the site. There would be about a 20-foot setback separating the masonry wall that runs along the south property line from the edge of the parking lot. Along that parking lot, there would be another six-foot-high chain-link fence. Adequate parking is being provided. And then landscaping, which is shown on this plan, maybe not too easy to see, but there are double row of trees proposed along the area between the fence, where the outside storage would occur, and that masonry wall adjacent to the residential. Planning Commission is recommending approval of this petition. One item to note as part of that approving resolution is the last item, which is a restriction that the waiver apply only to this petitioner and that any transfers would have to be first reviewed by council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Emling, is there anything you'd like to add to that before we have any council questions or comments?
Nothing of real importance, other than the landscaping he spoke of is there's some dogwoods showing on the drawings. At this time, we're going to be putting something a little more permanent that stays green all year round, like some arbor bodies, eight or 10-foot arbor bodies, or some pine trees in there. So something that's going to screen that off a little better for the future residents that may live back there when it does, or if it gets developed behind us, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Counsel, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I'll offer an approving on this.
Is that for consent?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Barr.
Just one question through the chair to Mark Toramina. And Mark, forgive me if you said this and I just missed it, but what is the aspect of this development that makes it a waiver use?
The type of storage. It's in connection with, in this case, a building business. There are several uses that fall under the special trades contractors. So it's the form of outside storage. In this case, it's predominantly building materials associated with this construction business.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Remind me again, this is properly zoned for this usage, the M1 light manufacturing?
It treats this use as a special land use or a waiver use. That's correct.
And then the fence, it's the typical chain-link fence that's going to go around the perimeter of the back?
That's my understanding, yes. There's a gate up front that I think is more decorative. That's an aluminum gate, but I believe the majority of fencing, if I'm not mistaken, would be chain-link.
Well, it's city's little desires. We can go with the black aluminum all the way around. If they want more of a screen, then we go with a chain-link with the privacy slats. We're not going to go wood or nothing like that. It's just too much maintenance. So something like, you know, whatever is going to look the best. And it's my development, so I want it to look the best, and I want it to reflect the best on the neighbors that are going to be developing around us as well.
Thank you, sir.
The black aluminum is nice, or the six-foot chain-link, so whatever, whatever council decides, yep.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to the petitioner, just a quick question. Obviously, it's pretty vague with building materials. Do you have kind of specifics of what kind of materials you will be storing on site?
They're going to be hard materials. Not going to be any liquids, no diesels, fuels, or nothing. You know, no liquid antifreeze or nothing like that, as far as a concern of any spillage is going to be concerned. There's going to be hard... Like when we go out and buy piping and fence gates and stuff for the dumpster enclosures, we like to store them and keep them secure. Stuff like that's easily, somebody can back up with a trailer and pick them up and drive off. We want to keep that kind of stuff secured. All the soft stuff, like ceiling tiles and stuff, is stored inside the building. The bigger, heavier stuff, the equipment stored out on a lot that we designated just for the heavier stuff, like the pallets of block and different things in our equipment.
Do you foresee any fill dirt if you're doing out? I mean, do you plan on bringing any kind of fill dirt to the site if you're doing a project?
No, as we have fill dirt and clean screen tops on site on a couple of the vacant lots right now that we're using for the developments as we go. So there's no need to bring in and store filter in a lot that size and small. It just doesn't make any sense. This is going to be my office, and kind of like you see trailers on construction sites, that's going to be my office and our trailers per se, where we're going to keep our small equipment stored.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Emling, you have an approving for consent from Mr. Morgan. That means you do not have to appear at the next city council meeting. You're all set this evening. Thank you, sir.
Fantastic. God bless you. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, a request for authorization to purchase Dell VMware hosted servers and switches. Comes to us from the Information Systems Department for City Hall Data Center from budgeted funds. Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Council. This item is a replacement for some of our hardware that we use in our VMware server environment. The two physical servers that are being replaced, they currently run 30 different virtual servers in the city's data and systems, and the current ones are at the end of life. We're also replacing two fiber channel switches in our infrastructure. These replacements will keep our systems running smoothly as fast as possible with the latest technology. Using the MHEC state contact pricing, contract pricing, the cost is $39,176, which is accounted for in this year's Information Systems Budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent if there are no questions.
Anybody else? Audience communication? Seeing none, you have an approving for consent. Item number five, request to amend Council Resolution 188-19 Information Systems Department to allow 123.net to provide fiber network connectivity to 16 city facilities. Mr. O'Neill, this is yours as well.
Good evening again. This is an item that would greatly expand our network connectivity throughout the city. The city's had a working relationship with 123net for several years. They currently provide wireless internet connectivity to four of our fire stations, and they lease space on our police tower. And we're looking to expand this relationship by working with them to build lease fiber connections out to several city facilities. With this proposal, they would build high-speed fiber lines that would connect off-campus city property to the main city campus through a 10-year lease agreement with the city. These locations include the four fire stations, the LPD gun range, the four housing facilities, Sandberg Library, and several city parks, including Greenmead, Byzantine Rotary, and Ford Fields. This will give us numerous technological advantages, including 1-gig speed to all these locations, add these locations to our existing city phone system, improve network security by removing the current third-party vendors we use for this connectivity now from the network. Will give us the ability to expand Wi-Fi for internal city staff and potentially provide public Wi-Fi in the parks. And it will also give us control of these buildings through network gate access and HVAC monitoring. Additionally, this change will allow us to cancel the existing services we currently use through... The parks, housing, and fire currently use through legacy AT&amp;T lines, metro ethernet, and business cable modems. And these reductions are estimated to be over $4,000 per month. And the first year of this project is budgeted for in the Information Systems Budget. And we have collaboration with police, fire, parks, and housing, and their leadership is all strongly in favor of this improvement to our operations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Counsel, Mr. Barr.
Casey, a few questions. This says the, a great deal of this is the build costs amortized over the 10 years of the agreement. So nobody has a crystal ball, but when we get through the 10 years, are you saying this is essentially free? Once we pay for the installation?
Well, it'll definitely go down in price. They still own the lines, but we'll be definitely have an advantage. That's already there, existing infrastructure.
And so you say the total's about 6,000 per month, about 4,000 in savings. So this nets us about 2,000 per month additional over what we're paying today for these expanded services.
Correct.
Okay. And then the last question I had is, I just caught the word potentially. You said potentially could bring Wi-Fi to our city parks.
Well, it's something we'll work with, with parks on that, but it's...
Okay, so the capability is there.
Capability. There's a lot of future proofing that this will allow us to look to.
Got it. I'll for approving for consent if there's no... Was there already?
There was not.
Okay. I'll for approving for consent if there's no objection.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barr. Audience communication? There is none. Mr. O'Neill, you have an approving for consent on number five.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number six, a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and purchase from sole source provider comes to us from the Livonia Fire Department for two Zoll cardiac monitors to replace outdated or decertified equipment, which are a critical piece of lifesaving equipment from budgeted funds. Chief Hevner.
Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight to request an approving resolution to purchase two cardiac monitors. This is from budgeted funds. Both of these monitors will go onto frontline equipment. The first one will go on to Tower 1. The other one will go on to... Well, actually, will allow the ability for us to put another X-series monitor that's currently in service onto our tactical EMS truck. Both of those current units being utilized are in the excess of 20 years old and far beyond their life expectancy. So if with a... I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sorry.
Counsel? Ms. McIntyre.
I would be happy to offer this for approving on consent. I understand why, in this case, we waived the sealed bid process because it's a sole source provider. And for anybody watching at home, that means that we don't have other options for purchasing it. So that's why we don't do a sealed bid process. So I know these are needed and time for the others to be replaced.
Thank you. Audience communication? There appears to be none. Chief, you have an approving for consent on item number six. Item number seven, a request for authorization to purchase one 2022 Lifeline Type 1 Superliner ambulance from the Livonia Fire Department to replace a current frontline vehicle as part of our vehicle replacement program. This is from budgeted funds. Chief, this is yours as well.
Yes, so again, requesting an approving resolution to purchase another ambulance, essentially. This would be consistent with the purchases that we've made over the last couple of years and part of our ongoing replacement program. This would be the same style vehicle that we replaced Squad 5, Squad 3, and most recently, a couple of weeks ago, Squad 4. The plan with this truck currently would be to go to Station 1, replace Squad 1, which would then trickle down into a reserve status. And ultimately, we would get rid of, either through auction or a direct sale, one of our reserve vehicles that is currently a 2006 reserve unit.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
I'd like to offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. Audience communication? There is none. Chief, you have an approving for consent on number seven. Thank you. Item number eight, request for authorization to purchase three 2022 Ford F-150 Responder Super Crew 4x4 pickup trucks from the Livonia Fire Department to replace current frontline vehicles and will add versatility and safety to the fleet while enhancing response capabilities from budgeted funds. Chief?
Again, requesting an approving resolution to purchase these three vehicles. We started this process a couple of years ago where we transitioned to pickup trucks for our inspector and administrative staff. The idea behind the concept of this is multiple faceted, actually. One is a clean cab concept. A lot of these folks have turnout gear that are used either on digging fires or responding to hazardous situations and environments. That gear is not, should not be contained inside a passenger cab of a vehicle. So we've gone to a pickup truck-style arrangement. The idea is that these three vehicles will complete our staff to where all administrative staff will be in a pickup truck vehicle. It gives us the versatility to pull trailers from point of location when it's needed through inspections or response or various other events that we attend or respond to. It gives us a safer working capacity and much more versatility across the wider range, wide array of things that we do for the department. This will be the final three vehicles that need to be purchased to complete this project.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'd like to offer an approving through consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any audience communication? There is none. Chief, you have an approving for consent on number eight.
Thank you.
Item nine is the award of contracts from the Department of Public Works for fats, oils, and grease prevention treatment through December 31 of 2023, with an option for extending that for an additional two years. This is from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Hi, good evening. Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. Thank you for that introduction of this item. The Department of Public Works is always looking for progressive, less intrusive, and safer ways for preventing or doing preventative maintenance on our buried infrastructure. The fats, oils, and grease prevention treatment is intended to greatly reduce the buildup of fats oils and grease, also known as FOG, is an acronym, in the main arteries of the city sanitary sewer system. Blockages that are caused by excessive fog can create sewer backups that would otherwise need to be removed by more intrusive methods using high-pressure hydrojetting or mechanical cutting tools to remove those. Biological treatment of sanitary sewers is a growing trend in the wastewater operations industry used to prevent the formation of fog. A reduction in fog would lead to reduction in emergency sewer cleaning and backups that are caused by it. The city of Southfield had publicly advertised and competitively bid this fog prevention treatment, 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 treatments, and services through the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network procurement system in March of 2020. The awarded contractor was Eganix. They were awarded a three-year contract through that bid. Eganix has successfully worked in many neighboring communities, providing both biological treatment product as well as installation services. Their products have been proven to be effective, and their services are professional and reliable. The Department of Public Works also has some experiences working with Eganix in the past and has been impressed with their capabilities in using this product. The funding for this contract is available within the Water and Sewer Fund and will improve our operations and maintenance activities in the sewer system. With that, I would respectfully request, Council, consider awarding a two-year contract with an option to extend for additional two years to Eganix in an amount not to exceed $80,000 annually for performing the fog prevention treatment in the areas of our sewer system that are known to be susceptible to fog buildup. And also waive the formal bidding process in accordance with city ordinance as there would be no advantage to the city resulting from competitive bidding of this project.
Counsel? Mr. Barr.
So Jacob, so the reason for the not to exceed, is that just because we don't know for certain exactly where all this will be used, or do we know?
We have a pretty good idea. We've been working with Sean Egan from Eganix. He's here in the audience as well, working with him to kind of try and formulate a plan of how to tackle some of these known areas that are susceptible to fog buildup in the system. So we've got a pretty good snapshot of where we think we're going to need to treat and how often. We won't really know until we get in there and start using the biological treatments of how quickly they're essentially eating up, or they're eating up the grease that's in the system. So once we start to know that better, we'll be able to better dial in the program. Based on our estimates, the 80,000 would cover us with, you know, a little extra in case we need to expand the program or treat more often than we are anticipating right now.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. President.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. So in comparison to other communities, how do we fare with our fog buildup? I mean, does Westland have more fog? Does Bedford Township, et cetera?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, throughout any municipal sewer system, right, we have everything from industrial to commercial uses, restaurant uses are a high factor in areas that we have buildup of fog. Because Livonia has a very well-used industrial corridor, some of those larger users that sewer users that discharge things that can have, whether it's some type of a fat or oil or grease, whether it's in a cooking process or something that they maybe refine, like milk or butter, you know, those types of things are all going to contribute to coagulating in the sewer system and creating fog buildup. So we do have a fair amount, mainly around the industrial corridor and south, or excuse me, Schoolcraft Road. That's going to be our main focus point.
Well, I look at this as preventative maintenance, and I think it'll save us money long-term as opposed to having some of the infrastructure issues that other communities could have. So with that being said, I'd look to offer an approving on consent if there's no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Donavick. I have a question. In terms of waiving the bid process, can you give a little bit more detail for the record why you're asking for that?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So as I had mentioned in my introduction of the item, our neighboring community, city of Southfield, had went through that competitive bid process for this exact... of Southfield, had went through that competitive bid process for this exact same treatment, the biological augment, biological or bio-augmentation for the sewer treatment. We were able to work with the vendor, with the contractor, to hold those same prices for the City of Livonia instead of having to go out for another bid since they were the low bid in that competitive bidding process. Essentially, a piggyback like we've done before on other contracts that have been bid through Mitten and holding those contract prices for the same terms and conditions and duration of the project here for us in Livonia.
Okay. I'm going to ask for that to be put on regular just because I'm not satisfied with that particular aspect of the, the presentation. So that'll be on regular at the next regular study meeting, or the regular voting meeting. Any audience communication? None. Okay. Item number 10, request to authorize expenditure from the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Department to enable payment for the 2022 subscription to Miss Dig service from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you. This is a routine annual authorization for payment of subscription dues for the Miss Dig system. As a water utility provider, the City of Livonia is required by state law to participate in that Miss Dig program. This program requires our water and sewer staff to mark our utility lines within a short given timeframe depending on the type of request, whether it's planned construction or an emergency repair that another utility is doing. The utility marking services are provided by our DPW staff essentially on a 24/7 schedule. And just for a bit of information, in 2021, we responded to 12,592 Miss Dig requests in the city. That equates to about 249 requests for, for marking of utilities each week of the year. So the funding for this payment is available within the Water and Sewer Fund, and it's respectfully requested that the city council consider authorizing payment to Miss Dig in the amount of $17,477.50 for the city's annual subscription fee.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Ms. McIntyre?
I'll offer an approving resolution for that on consent.
Audience communication? Seeing none, that'll be on consent at the next regular meeting. Item number 11, request to authorize appropriation and expenditure from the Department of Public Works for emergency water repair of pressure-reducing valve near Eight Mile and Grand River from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you again. This item is intended to inform you of an emergency repair that was conducted on a water main pressure-reducing valve, also known as a PRV, that was performed in December of 2021 near the intersection of Eight Mile and Grand River Roads. Essentially during a nearby water main replacement project, it was identified that this PRV was not operating properly as it should. Upon investigation by the DPW Water Operations Staff, it was discovered that the PRV was beyond any further repair and needed to be replaced. Despite being over 50 years old, the PRV had received regular routine maintenance quarterly and was recently fully serviced in 2018 and had been working properly up until that time. A replacement PRV was purchased on an emergency through the sole-source supplier, jet pump and valve. Once that PRV was received, DPW staff removed the old PRV and installed the new one, performed with our own forces, using our own materials and equipment to install that valve at really a cost savings to the city as we're able to do it ourselves instead of using a specialized contractor for that service. With that, it's respectfully requested that city council authorize the appropriation and expenditure in an amount of $16,557 to jet pump and valve for the purchase of this pressure-reducing valve from budgeted funds.
Counsel? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, just a quick question. This one, this is not one that's been before us. You said it was 50 years old. This was just emergency repair, we used cost, we've not seen this one. There was a different one, I think, a year or so ago, right?
Yeah, we, over the last couple of years, we replaced, I think this is now the fifth one that we've replaced of these pressure-reducing valves. Most of them were put in around the mid-'70s. This one was around that same vintage and it just gotten into that 50-year-old range. You know, is it, you can rebuild these things only, only so many times and eventually, something's going to happen and we have to replace them in full.
No, kudos to staff for, you know, obviously the install saving some money. So I don't see any issue approving for consent.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Audience communication? Seeing none, you have an approving for consent on item number 11. Item number 12, award of contract from the Department of Public Works with Plant Moran Cressa LLC to provide professional engineering services for space needs assessments and capital planning from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Thank you. And I'm going to step back from the mic here for a minute, let Mr. Varga introduce this topic, then I'll jump back in to go into a little more detail.
Sounds good. Mr. Varga?
Thanks, Jacob. Good evening, council. President Jolly. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Mayor Brosnan to share this request. While hiring a firm for a facility's need, need assessment and capital improvement plan might not sound exciting, we're indeed eager to bring this request. It's an important next step in Livonia Vision 21. Facility needs request assessment will help us get a handle on structural issues of our buildings and guide our decisions when it comes to repair and/or construction. This is especially relevant based on what COVID has taught us about the need for flexible workspace and community spaces. This assessment process is something council members have asked for. It's also something our community has requested as it was identified in the Vision 21 Master Plan. In that plan, this study of the city center was listed as a priority project directly following the update of the zoning ordinance, which you've already accomplished. As a bit of background, we started on this project by gathering a team of Livonia's best. Mark Tamina from Planning, Mike Slater from Finance, Don Rohrath and Jacob Rushlow from DPW, Jerome Hannah from Inspection, Ted Davis from Parks and Rec, Mayor Brosnan, and others. We then met with the officials from the Livonia Public Schools and the school district team shared with us the key role that Plant Moran Cressa played in addressing their facilities and developing a living, breathing strategic plan for the school buildings they have, what they need, and how to get there. Importantly, PMC's work also propelled the district's very successful bond issue and directed building improvements across the district over the past 10 years. Tonight, we bring you this contract proposal as the next step toward making Livonia Vision 21 a reality. With that and with your permission, I'd like to ask Jacob Rushlow to come back to the mic, answer, provide any more details and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Varga. Mr. Rushlow? Counsel, any questions at all? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. The one thing I'm, I have nothing against Plant Moran. I think they do a phenomenal job. But was this procured? Did we, is Plant Moran in our, our rotating list of, of professional services?
Excuse me. They are not currently. Part of that we'll, we'll address here in the next part of this presentation, if that's okay.
You know, I'll hold my question till then.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Donavich?
Thanks, Mr. President. Looking at the packet and the project-related assumptions, there's a list of, of different capital planning services. Is that in some sort of chronological order that you plan on doing City Hall first and the Police Department, Fire Department, Library, and Senior Park, or Senior Citizen Center? Or is that just kind of in order, not, any real order?
Yeah, no, good question. They're, they're just listed to identify all the properties that will be done concurrently. There's no chronological order because we'll, we're going to be doing them all at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow. Thanks, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barr?
So Jacob, help me, I, I think it's good that we're doing this and, you know, we actually talked about this at length during the budget process last year, so I think a lot of questions were probably answered back then as far as the intent. But looking at the buildings that Mr. Donavich was just alluding to, to this point, I, I'm assuming that the department heads over each of these buildings has a pretty good handle on, on what the needs of these buildings are, since you're living and breathing it every day. Is this, help me differentiate what we're doing here from that normal activity that happens? Is this just a more holistic view or?
Yeah, definitely. So the process that our consultant here with Plant Moran Cressa would do is go into each one of those buildings and perform not just a needs assessment for space, they, they are doing that, which, which involves their independent third-party review of current operations, how spaces are being used, is there excess utilization, or is there a need for additional space? You know, what's the capacity in those buildings? Interviewing the department heads as well as staff, key staff, to understand how they work day in and day out within those spaces. And then another big part of that is a condition assessment of the existing facility. What's the condition of all the major assets within that building to put together a lifecycle analysis of, you know, where we're at with the building? Is it, is it something that can be, is there repairs needed that are critical? Are there things that can be considered deferred maintenance that we can do later, put on a capital plan? Or are we looking at, you know, long-term future objectives for that space and, and how it's used and maybe reconstruction or rebuild, those types of things? So all that comes into play as long as, as well as the operations side of the, of the needs for that building.
Yeah, I do recall being impressed by the plan that you alluded to from Livonia Public Schools and wishing that we had something similar to that. So, okay, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Rushlow, you have a friend here. Do you want to introduce him?
I do, yeah. I, I did want to step through a couple of other things to maybe clarify a couple of questions, and I will certainly introduce Plant Moran. So with us tonight are two members from Plant Moran. Both Paul and Andy are here to answer any questions, and I think they're going to get to Councilman Barr's point a little bit on talking about the successes that they've had with Livonia Public Schools, which is a part of the reason why they're here tonight in front of you to, to be considered for this, for this project. But as Mr. Varga had mentioned, you know, over the past few months, we spent a lot of time collaborating amongst the city team members and department heads with the goal of continued progress towards those priorities set by the community, this council, previous councils as well, through the Livonia 21 Master Plan. Obviously, the focus being Civic Center Campus that we're talking about here today. It's really first steps towards responsible capital planning for facility improvements that begins with knowing what we have, its condition, viability, and then how it's being used, which is what we just talked about. The conditions, condition assessment and space needs assessment is proposed to be conducted for the multiple buildings that were listed, City Hall, Police and Fire, the Library, Senior Center, Rec Center, Housing, and Community Transit and their use. This assessment will analyze the conditions of each building, the available space, how it's utilized, departmental operations, and future objectives. Recommendations to prioritize and improve, any improvement opportunities will be provided in the report for each along with associated budget considerations that comes along with each one of those. Once those assessments are complete, the next part of this plan would be to move forward with a capital improvement plan. That will be developed, that'll categorize what I mentioned was those areas of, are these critical needs, or can there be deferred maintenance, or are these enhancement projects to come in alignment with our future funding that's available for improvement?
Thank you, sir.
The goal is really to determine what we can get out of each building today and, and paint a roadmap for the future. And with that, we'd have, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd like to kick it over to Plant Moran to allow them the opportunity to speak a little bit on their experience working with Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Fountain. I'm with Plant Moran Cressa. I, I currently live at 5938 Oakland Valley Drive in Oakland Township, so I'm not currently a resident of, of the City of Livonia, but do have some family that live in the area. We really appreciate the opportunity this evening to, to be here and discuss the scope of work and the proposal that we have provided to the city. Just to provide a little context to some of the work that we've been involved with here in the City of Livonia, more, more so related to the school district. We've been the program manager, owner's rep for Livonia Public Schools for the better part of the last 10 years. We've completed about $230 million worth of construction programs over, over that time period, and we currently are under contract to work with them on their 2021 bond, which was approximately $186 million. That'll happen over the next four or five years. As Mr. Rushlow had, had alluded to, part of our scope here is to provide you with a 10-year capital plan. Sounds like you might be familiar with that document that was, same scope of work that was provided to Livonia Public Schools. That's a living, breathing document, something that we work with, not only with Livonia Public Schools, with plenty of other municipal clients in the area, some of your neighboring communities, City of Westland, Canton Township, City of Farmington Hills, and others. And that's, that's something that we work with, with all of our clients, regular and reoccurring. We update that document annually to make sure that they're making decisions with current and accurate information. With me tonight is, is Paul Terrio. He's the partner in charge on the Livonia Public Schools account. And again, we appreciate the opportunity and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions? Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chair to the petitioner, or not the petitioner, to Mr. like.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes, thank you. Looking at Phase One in, in the documentation, that capital improvement plan that you speak of, is that included in Phase One or is that in Phase Two?
So that, that, the capital improvement, Phase One is comprised of both the space needs assessment and the capital plan. So both of those, both those scopes of work that are articulated within Phase One are, what's part of the authorization for this evening?
So we would walk away with a 10-year CIP plan based on any kind of obviously needs assessments?
Yes.
The other question that I did have is, it does show on, under the due diligence, you know, you've got the, the Alta surveys, the Espaces. I assume that in the geotechnical reports, I assume that that is not included. Those would be above and beyond cost. That would be change orders. Am I correct on that?
Actually, what we would do is we would review any historical information that you may have on hand. If there are items that we identify that require any of those services, we would then make a recommendation for you to enter into a, you know, a contract to procure those services.
Thank you. And then the last question I do have is, obviously, you're going to be given a, a 10-year needs assessment based on each facility. Will you guys be providing recommendations on potential new construction? If you look at some of these facilities and the feasibility of a 10-year plan is going to come up with astronomical numbers, will you provide the recommendation in that case?
Yeah, we're going to work with the project team to develop recommendations for each facility, whether that's a renovation program, perhaps replacement, or any, any, any needs that may, that are required to, to maintain that facility. But that may include a recommendation for replacement.
And then the report did say you're looking at, upon approval, three months?
I believe our duration was four months.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. In Phase Two services, there's no fee. It just says that COL and PMC will work together to establish a mutual agreeable fee and duration for Phase Two. Is that normal to not give a price on the second phase? For instance, if there's another council here at the Phase Two portion and we don't agree with it, does that make Phase One isn't necessarily usable anymore?
So the intent behind Phase Two being authorized via, whether it's change order or what have you, is the, the results that you're going to yield out of the Phase One analysis will drive what that scope might look like for Phase Two. So by way of example, if we come up with a recommendation to take a building offline, I don't know that you're going to be interested in, in having any further, you know, work or market analysis or anything like that done with that specific site. So really, the intent there was for us to do that first phase, come up with our list of recommendations, and then if the city so chooses, if they activate Phase Two services, that we would then craft a, a fee and, and scope that matches up with the results from Phase One.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any motions from the council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Barr?
I'll offer an approving. I, as I said, we talked about this earlier at budget time. We've had an opportunity to answer some good questions tonight. I think this makes a ton of sense within the long-term plan of Vision 21, and I also think it makes short-term sense as we frequently are questioning the, the value of various repairs that we're asked to, to talk about here, and I think this will provide a lot of insight for that as well. So I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Mr. McCullough?
Can I ask Mr. Rushlow, if I may, the one question that I originally had about the procurement, just trying to get to the bottom of that?
Yeah, certainly. So after meeting with our staff, starting this process and meeting with Livonia Public Schools, we really came to realize that the services that Plant Moran Cressa is offering under one roof, under that one company and their one entity, is something that is unique, a unique combination of services that we won't be able to really find by bidding this out and trying to find another company that may be able to do it with some joint venture or combination thereof of services from other companies put together. We know that Plant Moran can do this. They've proven that they can do it with Livonia Public Schools. And with that, we think it's a worthwhile endeavor to proceed with that company that can provide a unique host of services. can provide a unique host of services under one roof. That was really the driving force for that.
I have no issue. I actually think that this is long overdue, everything that Mr. Varga brought up. Gaining this will kind of give us a baseline going forward, exactly what we need with these facilities. It's going to develop a budgeting plan rather than having to replace air handlers with emergency repairs for close to a half million dollars, so I totally applaud that. I am just a little on the fence about not procuring the services. Nothing against Plant Moran, I know of them, they do great work for that. I'd like to put it on the regular, if I may.
Okay, that'll be on regular. I have one question. So you're referring to the Livonia Public Schools' experience working with Plant Moran Cressa. If my memory serves correctly, they provided work for us in the building of the new courthouse approximately 10 years ago, is that correct?
I apologize, I'm not familiar with how that project was.
I would like to hear a little bit about our experience working with them. And, you know, the other side of Farmington Road is fine, but I'm a little bit more concerned about this side of Farmington Road. I think Mr. Slater's up here, the man who was here and probably could give us some detail on that. Just for frame of reference, if we're talking about this and, you know, this is a relatively important contract, can you give us some of those details?
Absolutely. Yeah, you're 100% correct. Plant Moran Cressa was our advisor in the construction of the new district court. They provided excellent service on that contract. The project was done on time and within budget, and I'm trying to think, you can certainly speak to the judges, but from council would have been Mr. Meakin would have had the most experience with them, and he was part of the committee that worked with Plant Moran Cressa and the courthouse. But our, our experience was very favorable. And if I might, just one additional piece on the procurement process. In our ordinance, our finance ordinance, one of the exceptions for waiving sealed bids is the procurement of professional services. So that, that is an existing exemption that council has the opportunity to use in terms of procuring these type of services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Any audience communication? I see none. This will be on the regular agenda at the next voting meeting. Thank you all. Item number 13, award of bid from the Department of Public Works Division for the preparation and painting of the interior of the Fleet Maintenance Garage from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow?
Good evening, once again, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. This item is a request to accept bids and award a contract for the interior painting of the Fleet Maintenance Building. This work includes some ancillary items necessary for the painting project to occur, including raving and protecting machinery and equipment that's in the garage right now, as well as repairing walls as needed, mainly around existing doors, the garage doors and frames. The project was publicly advertised and bids were received from six contractors. The lowest qualified bid was received from TN Construction and funding for this payment is available within the Capital Projects Fund. With that, it's respectfully requested that city council award a contract to TN Construction in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred and eighty dollars for this project.
Counsel? Ms. McIntyre?
This is, this is a needed painting for both, not just aesthetics, but to improve the lighting in that garage. I also understand this will help ensure that any asbestos or other dangerous material is kind of sealed in, so I would like to offer this for approval on consent if none of my colleagues object.
I see none. Audience communication? I see none. That will be on consent at the next regular meeting. Item number 14, thank you, Mr. Rushlow. Item number 14, request to approve the establishment of improvement bonds from the Engineering Division to assure the installation of public improvements at Emerson Oaks Site condominium located on the north side of West Chicago Avenue, west of Harrison Avenue, at 28400 West Chicago, formerly Wilson Elementary School site in the northwest quarter section of 36. Mr. Lear, you have been waiting patiently and this justifies your spending the night here at the meeting with us. The floor is yours.
I was about to say, unfortunately, this is kind of just a housekeeping item. Where, with any new development, we have to establish all the improvement bonds and fees for the development to move forward, so. Based on contractors' estimates for the improvements in there, we're asking the council to approve the, the associated bonds and fees in order to move forward with getting this built.
Thank you, sir. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donavich.
I'd offer an approving on consent if my colleagues have no objections.
I see no objections. Audience communication? I see none. That will be on the consent agenda at the next regular meeting. That concludes our, audience communication? None. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Any closing audience communication? I see none. Any closing remarks from the council? I see none. It is a pleasure to call the meeting complete. Have a good night, Livonia.